Welcome to the August 16, 2023, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present. Did we have any public comments for this meeting?
No.
Who's keeping up with those, just so I know going forward? Who would know that?
Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Jacob.
Those go to Ms. Jacob.
Mr. Blomley?
Yes, so.
I'll look at the two of you all. We have no registered public comments for this meeting. Our next item will be to approve minutes of the August 2, 2023, Planning Commission meeting, which we've had a chance to review prior to this. Anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
There are none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. All in. Oh, Ms. Jacob. We will now, starting with this meeting, I believe, we will have roll call votes for every vote during Planning Commission meetings going forward. Thank you. Commissioner Abelwater?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. Again, we reviewed this prior to the meeting. Does anybody have any of these items they would like removed for further discussion?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob. Commissioner Abelwater?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, under old business, we do have one item today. We have Dutch Brothers Coffee. It's a site plan review of a 950-square-foot specialty restaurant with a drive-thru located on 0.80 acres, Zoned Commercial Highway, located at 1950 Old Fort Parkway. Dutch Brothers Coffee LLC is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you, Planning Commission members. I'd like to present to you today an application for which the applicants requested a deferral for 180 days to respond to some questions and comments the Planning Commission had at the initial review of this project. It is for a Dutch Bros Coffee, and it's most like a kiosk, except for it does have outdoor dining, and so if it has outdoor dining, we actually have it fall into the category of a restaurant with drive-through, a specialty restaurant. This will be the third location that they're looking to add at Dutch Bros in Murfreesboro. The first that's under construction, nearing completion, is on Memorial Boulevard, near the Aldis. The second was approved last month on the west side of town. And then for this location, it's actually a...
I think they've got it online. If the cable department could switch it over to the podium computer.
What you looking at?
So, this site is an existing bank that's been vacant for quite some time. The property owners acquired it about two years ago, and they were looking for... I used for this property, and it appeared to them that a bank was not looking to locate here, and so they started working with different potential clients to locate on this project. And when we talked about it before, I shared that our staff shared with them that it's at an intersection, which, you know, we look at any development closely. We, in Murfreesboro, who live here and drive it and go shopping, are familiar with this intersection at Marketplace and Old Fort Parkway. It does have Frontage Drive that runs along the... Old Fort Parkway, of course, is the highway. T-Dot, this Frontage Road is also T-Dot right-of-way, and so this parcel has access to T-Dot Road. It also has access, or to the Frontage Road, also has access to Marketplace, and so it's a double frontage lot. But nestled in here is the intersection at Frontage Road and Marketplace that we have had conversations with them about. And so because this is a drive-through user, Planning Commission was looking at it pretty closely, particularly because it has impacts on a major arterial, which Old Fort Parkway is a major arterial. The design team have been able to address most of the staff comments that staffs provided. We went through some architectural comments, and it seemed that the plan was fairly well-received when you got the plans a couple months ago. They did make changes to the building. The blue that they originally proposed, which they said was a trademark color, they were able to go from that to a material that's approved, and the color is actually within our ability to approve here. They've also worked with the design. This is a double frontage kiosk, so they're retesting some of those panels that you see that looks like a side but it's technically a front, and they do have a covered outdoor dining area. There are, I think, there's, they've been, the design team have been working on the plan, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm just skipping through the pages, have included all the information here, just so that you can have it available. But they've been working through the plan diligently to come up with something that they thought could address the concerns, and they've also got a presentation on the numbers that they'd like to show you regarding the, regarding the, I guess, the impact the traffic will have to the site. I did ask Ms. Knoll to be present this afternoon, so she can provide you additional feedback. I think most of the comments are related to transportation access and circulation, and so she did a sketch that she'd like to share with you and talk through the access that's proposed. And after Ms. Knoll goes through that, the design team would like to speak as well. Before she takes over, is there any questions that you have from me, or would you like to go ahead and get the information?
I would just like to go ahead, and if we could also ask the cable department. Our screens are still on Mr. Blomley's screen, so if we could get our screens on what you're seeing up there on the TVs, that would be great. Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, did anybody have any questions for Ms. Green before we hear from Katie? Okay, Ms. Knoll, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. So, I've taken their site plan, and this is just their site plan. Their access points are a right-in, pretty close to the intersection. It is only a right-in, full access at the rear of their site, and they were originally proposing a full-out, a full-access here. This is my markup. I've kind of changed their design a little bit. See that a little bit there? So, what we would like to see is staff is actually a, just to restrict the left-in movement to allow a left-out, and I will switch this over to another diagram. So, the site is here, and I've kind of mapped out some of the routes of how you would probably get to and from this location. Their numbers say most of the traffic is passerby traffic on Old Fort Parkway, which we do agree with, but it doesn't necessarily take into account the intersection of the Frontage Road and Marketplace. So, if you are getting to this location, you're probably either coming from Old Fort Parkway at Marketplace, coming from Walmart area Thompson Lane along the Frontage Road, Mall Circle Drive to the Frontage Road, or from the shopping centers via private drives to the rear. Why we do not want to see a right-in, right-out at that intersection is if you have a right-in, right-out, that forces all of the traffic to come back here to this intersection, or back here, so most of the traffic would be here. By allowing that left movement out, just going back and forth here, it allows some of that traffic to come over here to this signal at Mall Circle Drive and Old Fort Parkway, and hopefully pull some of the traffic away from this.
And you think that doesn't create any more with the people that would be turning off of Old Fort Parkway and turning in to this area?
So, it would restrict the left movement in, but it would allow the left movement out.
I'm just worried about the people turning out of the site and turning left, crossing, you know, that traffic. You don't, that's not good enough.
It would be backing up in their sight, so if it's, if they can get out and make that left, they can. It would be a self-regulating, but would prefer that traffic to move away from this intersection whenever possible.
All right, another question, and it may be for you or someone else. After this was presented last time, I had talked to Chris Griffin, Greg McKnight, and a few other people about the city's possibility of closing the intersection of Market and Old Fort, where you would just have the Frontage Road and Market. Do we know anything, an update about that study?
I think Michelle Emerson, our city engineer, is here to answer those questions.
Sir, Kimberly Horn is currently working on a task order for us about, and T-Dot, about the feasibility of widening Old Fort between I-24, going east from where we just did. And with that, we are going to include the task order of closing that intersection also.
Okay, so that's going to be part of that?
It's a part of their study that they're going to do.
Okay. I like this project a lot without that intersection. I don't like it with the intersection.
Are there any other questions for me, or would we like the applicant to come up and present?
Any other questions for Ms. Knoll before we hear from the developers?
They're studying. Can you, I'm so sorry, can you scroll up? My agenda's not loading, I'm having a hard time.
That's...
I just want to see the northernmost entrance on Marketplace?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure that's what I reviewed.
Yes.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And so just, just as clarification for the plan that Ms. Knoll showed, it's different from what's in your agenda packet. Just yesterday, or the day before, the design team emailed us a revised plan with that southernmost entrance on Marketplace to be right-in only, so...
No, it was right-in, right-out, that was mine.
No, no, not, not on Marketplace, not on the Frontage Road, on Marketplace. So, it was a right-in, right-out on the, on the plan that was in the agenda packet, and so that's the reason why the, what Ms. Knoll just showed you is different on the southernmost entrance on Marketplace. It's, the applicants are volunteering to restrict that to a right-in only. Mr. Brick Murfree is going to head to the podium now.
Good afternoon, everybody. Chairman Jones, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Brick Murfree of the law firm of Murfree and Goodman. I represent the applicant, Dutch Bros. They had requested this be deferred for several months to work on some questions and concerns that you, the Planning Commission, and staff as well, had presented. They've worked very hard with staff on some reconfigurations of the lot, with, you know, a focus on the concerns regarding the double traffic light there. We've worked with staff and, you know, understand staff's recommendation of a left-out movement there on the frontage. If that's something the Planning Commission would like to see, then the applicant is willing to do that. We want to be responsive to staff's concerns and your concerns as a body. So, Ms. Grace Wooton with Reagan Smith is here to speak specifically about this and about the application, the changes that are made. Also, Mr. J.J. Herzog with Dutch Bros is here to discuss operations. They've got a full team that they brought in, but like I said, we're, we're willing to work with, with y'all's recommendations. So, I'll let the, the team present if there are any questions that you have during the presentation, or for me, I'm, I'm here to answer them, and I appreciate your time and attention to this, but we've worked very hard to try to bring to you guys something to be proud of. It's an old bank site, as referenced, and we're trying to bring it up to codes and up to current ordinances and do something good on that site that also is conscious of the challenging traffic lights that are there. So, thank you so much. Are there questions for me, or...
So, this is different than what you sent me yesterday?
Yes.
Is that right?
It is.
Only on that mall circle entrance?
It is. It, it shows staff's recommendations as to that.
Which is a right-in, but an open-out?
Right-in, right-out, and then left-out.
Perfect, okay. I'm good. Yes, thank you, Rick.
On the Frontage Road?
And that's per staff recommendations, which Dutch Brothers is willing to do if that's the, the decision of, of...
And still just a right-in on the first entrance on Marketplace, is that...
Correct. Just, just right-in on Marketplace, and we feel like that will help get people through that light and onto the site, and you won't have people trying to turn left there at that traffic, you know, right before that traffic light and back in traffic up into that second interchange. But Grace Wooton with Reagan Smith is here, and she can talk more intelligently about these things as a lawyer. She, she's, she's an expert, not me, so...
Okay. Ms. Wooton?
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Grace Wooton with Reagan Smith, and it's good to see you all again. The last time we all spoke, it was concerning the traffic and this intersection and how we were going to deal with it, and we decided to defer because it was clear we needed to exhaust more of our resources, and so we've done just that in this time period. We've reached out to the city's traffic engineer, we've worked with Katie and Margaret Ann, we've come up with a traffic memo and studied traffic patterns around the site, and while it doesn't seem the site has changed much, we have looked at the right-in only that you would see, that you mentioned, as well as the right-in on frontage with the left-out, primarily to direct people away from that frontage road and, I mean, from the Old Fort Parkway intersection. If you have any questions for me concerning the site, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'd like to invite Operations J.J. up here to discuss how our site works with how Dutch Bros operates and how together those, we've come up with the best possible outcome for the site in question. And we've also presented a overlay of the existing site versus ours, and how we've narrowed and gotten rid of one of the accesses on Marketplace, and ultimately, we're bringing a non-compliant site up to compliance, as well as providing a use that is allowed within the code. So, J.J., you want to come up here?
Hello, my name's J.J. Herzog. I'm the Regional Business Coach overseeing four states as we expand out here to the east. I'm from Battleground, Washington, previous to taking this role as a Regional Business Coach. I was a store operator of three locations in Washington, in Vancouver, and Battleground, and my Battleground location was the, one of the busiest ones in the state of Washington, company-owned stores. They asked me to come and speak about operations, and I'd really just like to not speak about things you're not interested in. If you'd like to ask any questions, I'd be happy to address any concerns or answer any questions you have about how Dutch Bros operates.
I have a question, just in general, not in regards to the, these access points. If we get, if we get past that, this is a, has outdoor eating, is that what?
Typically, we put two small, just little picnic table benches for people to sit at while they enjoy a coffee. We don't serve too much food, so there's not really a reason for people to stay for more than about 10 minutes.
Okay, so when they come into the site to actually park and, and come into the building, they're parking on those, in those parking spaces that are at the back?
Part of that is probably going to be employee parking, but we do have spots for, yeah, for customers to park and walk up. Typically, we see about 10% or less of our business being walk-up business, so it's very minimal.
And they walk across, is that yellow line in the parking lot, something that's, where would they walk from there? Just across the, the two drive-through lanes?
Typically, we see a raised sidewalk that goes over and curves in. I'm not, this is really my first time seeing this site plan, so...
So, you have more expertise, I guess, in when the cars come on-site and they split apart?
Yes.
And then they somehow merge back together in the end?
They, yeah, they pull in, then there's two lanes, and then there's a merge lane, and what we do is we have a little bit different system. We don't have a menu board. We have one of our employees stand outside, take the orders in direct traffic, and kind of lead people as they do the merge.
All right. I'm just, was more concerned about the parking for anybody actually getting out and coming into the building.
Typically, we will show, and you can see it, it's not, once you zoom in, there is accessible sidewalk that goes through that parking island, and we would show on our final construction documents a crosswalk that goes to there and to this island, as well as a sidewalk that will connect to this area. So, we'll, we'll ensure that that is accessible and safe.
So, where does the person take the order?
They would come up to the covered patio area. There's a window there that slides open that's similar to the drive-up window on the other side.
Did I hear you right, that someone takes your order from open to close? There's no, there's no, so there's no squawk box at all?
There's no squawk box at all, yeah. So, only times we don't have somebody out there is if there's less than three cars in line. We have designed an access door that is just behind the drive-up window where the employees can step out quickly to the third car as soon as the third car pulls in. So, our goal is to have each customer in and out in about a minute, depending on queuing times. Busier times, it can be as much as a minute 30 seconds, and then our fastest time for customers to queue is about 45 seconds average per car.
So, it's, it's part of your standard operating procedure to regularly staff enough people to be able to run out there and do this stuff? Okay, thank you.
And you have these queuing lines at the other locations that you're speaking of, that you've been, been part of, where they split out and come back together, and all of that, all that works?
Yes, yeah. Our, our most current model typically has the double lane. We do have a couple locations that have three lanes, but typically, it's two.
Two lanes like this, merging?
Yes.
In and out? And everybody playing nice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, back to the access entrance.
And, Madam Chair, I did also want to mention that if you have any questions, any additional traffic-related questions, we do have City Traffic Engineer Ron Balachandra here, available to answer any questions that you may have as well.
What an honor, Mr. Ball.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
I still have the same concerns I did last time. It's not necessarily the business, it's that intersection to me.
But I feel like this is a good thing. It's like the best option possible for the site that we're looking at. Unless you just want the in and out from the very back, do you think?
Yeah, just office use, low-impact.
All back there?
Yeah.
I see, okay, so then one...
No, what I'm saying is just the high-impact user, I don't like the high-impact user on that site. I'd rather have an office or low-impact site there. But I'm only one of seven.
We realize. What other comments and questions? Ms. Knoll, are y'all comfortable with this from a traffic standpoint?
Yes, ma'am. We are. We, like you said, it's as good as it's going to get for this site.
With the change that you have?
With the change, yes.
That is not part of our package, but what we're looking at on the screen right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that is one of our staff comments, so if you, if you, the Planning Commission does wish to approve this plan, and if you condition it upon staff comments, that would be caught in, in our staff comments.
Mr. Murfree?
And the applicant has agreed to the, that, that staff recommended change. I just want to make that clear, that we're willing to do that and are committed to do that if that's what the Planning Commission determines we should do.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Subject to all, yeah.
So, we have a motion and a second, subject to all staff comments. So, Ms. Jacob? Commissioner Abelwater?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Nay.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
So, motion passes, six to one. Thank you all very much, appreciate all your extra effort and hard work on that. Next, we will move on to the GDO portion of our meeting. We have two items there today. We have the Parkway Office Park, re-subdivision of lots one and two. It's a final plat for one lot on 3.5 acres, Zoned MU and GDO III, located along Gateway Boulevard. Gateway MOB LLC is the developer. Mr. Brad, Brad Barbie, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Nobles and members of the Planning Commission. The next item for you is a final plat. You would normally see this on your consent agenda, but as it is located inside our Gateway Design Overlay, it is required to be brought before you here today. This is the property that the next item on the agenda is proposed for development. The plat is generally in good order. We'd ask that any, any approval be made, subject to staff comments, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions regarding this final plat?
If there are none, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments, if there are any.
A motion and a second. Ms. Jacob? Councilmember Abelwater?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is our Waterstone Lot One and Two. It is the final design and site plan review of a 40,919-square-foot medical office building located on 3.5 acres, Zoned MU and GDO One, located along Gateway Boulevard, Kennedy Drive, and Carl Adams Drive. Agalitis, Agalitis, property development developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much.
Correct me on that.
This next item is for you to consider final design and site plan approval for the two lots which you just considered a re-subdivision plat. Currently, you can see on our GIS that there are two lots that are along Gateway Boulevard, which is a public right-of-way. Kennedy Drive, a public right-of-way, and Carl Adams Drive, which is a private street. So, it's available to the public to access, but the maintenance is done by the Owners Association as opposed to the City of Murfreesboro's Public Infrastructure Department. And that came up in our discussion during initial design review, so I just wanted to refresh your memory on that. This property is located in our Gateway Design Overlay District, and it's actually in the GDO III, which is an area that the city created to create that Class A office space in Murfreesboro, in also anticipation of moving the hospital nearby from downtown to here as well, which seems like it just happened yesterday. So, this does combine two lots, and along the lot lines is an existing easement that the applicants are proposing to keep in place. That also is important when we're talking about this site layout and design. I'm going to go ahead and pass the material board around. Be careful, this glass might, well, maybe I'll just keep it because it's dangerous, have the architect finish that later. But, you know, a material board is required to be submitted with the GDO because it shows us exactly what the materials look like in real life and where they're going on the building. So, I'll pass this around so you can look at that again while we go through the building.
Did we see this last time, Mark?
Yes.
The same material boards at initial, okay. Nothing's changed, in other words?
The reason I'm passing it around is because staff's comment last time was that the accessory structure wasn't compatible with the principal structure and materials and, and design, and so these are the materials that you're looking at in today. At initial design review, you did, the applicant requested this item to continue the final design review with the condition that the carport would be reworked with the risk of the project not being approved for final design review today. And so essentially, some of that review that should have been done at initial design review was pushed to today. I wanted to make sure to give you that board with final design review so that you can see that, and when you review the carport, you can have that information available to The site is largely the same. There is, they are providing the gateway streetscape elements that are required along the public and private street. That includes sidewalks, irrigation in the back of curb, and street lighting. This site also provides the formal open space, mostly the formal open spaces along the building. They did add some additional elements to connect to the corner, which I think is really They did add some additional elements to connect to the corner, which I think is really neat, but that's in addition to what's required. Also on this plan is the carport that's located in this area, and you can see that there's a cloud pattern around that. And staff shared that that carport was an accessory structure, and the gateway accessory structures have to have the same design as the principal structure, and that we were concerned that it didn't meet those standards in the zoning ordinance and in the design guidelines. So they're bringing it back to you today, hoping that they've been able to address what comments you have. Staff's recommendation was to relocate it to the side of the building so that it's not between the building and a public accessway, but they would like to leave that easement there. And with that easement in place, they don't want to put a structure there. So the option would be to relocate the easement, which is an option, and move the structure there, or leave the easement there, look for another place for the structure, or just not do the carport. So I think those are the three options that they have. I did ask the design team to identify what has changed on the carport with what you saw before, and they said that, let me find what they said. "The plans have been revised to shift the carport to the east so that it does not project beyond the build." The building is what they're talking about. "With this change, additional landscaping was provided in the adjacent island. The architect is now proposing to wrap the columns in brick," and you can see that they're using two colors to match the building. "Staff request the architect discuss the design with the Planning Commission and get your feedback today. According to the architect, the exterior design of the proposed parking structure has been revised so that the brick, matching the first level of brick, is shown wrapping the columns. A prefinished metal cornice or fascia matching the corners of the development building is shown in the roof system. The soffit of the roof system is designed to be light-colored, prefinished metal panels." Additionally, the design team modified the location of the covered parking to center up the rear door and remove two eastern parking spots provided to provide additional landscaping. So those are what they've shared with us are the changes. It may be that the Planning Commission would like them to look for opportunities to integrate the downspouts into those columns so that they don't have them fixed to the outside as well. If you do like the design, that may be something that you want to see them do. But I'd like to invite the design team today to come up and go through it. As far as other site elements, they do meet the minimum parking standards and their setbacks. Do you have any questions for me before the design team comes?
I do. I'm sorry, is it glass or aluminum? The canopy carport?
There's two canopies. There's one on the building, and what you're remembering with that glass is, I think, here. And that's the porticus share, actually, where it's designed, where you can drive up and drop off the patients. This carport seems multifunctional. I think during the last meeting, we discovered they wanted to use it for physician parking and maybe the exits of some of the patients. And so this, you can see, is metal.
Originally, it was just one, though, right?
No.
It was always two? Okay.
Do we know the front canopy, the glass one, that angle, is that about the same angle as TOA's building beside the hospital, or what? You can't really tell. Like, I saw TOA's got a pretty aggressive angle on the front of it at the hospital. What kind of angle is that compared to TOA's?
I didn't compare it to TOA. I would need to go and look at our past files to give that information to you.
Looks pretty drastic in that picture, but maybe it's just deceiving, doesn't it?
That's why I was wondering, just comparing the two.
I will just comment. I don't really like, I appreciate the columns being covered in the brick, but not just about 80%, and I don't like the downspouts showing everywhere. I still think it's kind of just sloppy-looking.
I agree. I drove all through our medical area, I drove through Smyrna's medical area, and I didn't see any other buildings that had kind of like an after-thoughtage carport at the bottom back of their building. I don't want to set the precedent of building all these medical buildings and then put carports behind all of them.
I agree. I understand the drive-through purpose for patients being picked up and dropped off, but I don't think a carport that you park under is fitting for the gateway.
I would have to agree. As, I would say, I think the newer rendition looks a lot better, but I still think it's kind of out of place for a medical building.
I don't even think my HOA's DRC would approve that on my house.
School board wouldn't put that at a school.
Are there any specific things other than the carport we need to be addressing today? Or I know that's our kind of main focus at this point.
I believe that the site, they've been able to address the comments. Most of the comments that we have are just conditional prior to permit comments that are pretty standard. And so really, really, the carport is the thing. And they would, of course, need to go to DRC after they get your approval and see if the DRC is comfortable with the design. And if not, it would come back to you as well.
Well, any other comments, questions? Green, or did they want to speak?
I would think so.
Hello, Evan Foster with Reagan Smith, and I'm hearing, you know, zero support for the adjustments we've made to the carport, so we're willing to take that off the plan if that is what it takes to move this project forward. And I'm here to address any site-related questions you may have.
So not to bring up, but I just have a question. I think, and I may be not remembering this correctly, but one of the statements, arguments for the carport was if it was raining and you had patients that were going to exit a separate, meaning they didn't want to go through the entrance, correct?
If there's like patients after any operation.
Correct. You wanted them to go through a separate exit than the front door, correct?
Typically, yes.
Okay. And so, and I get that, because, well, anyway, I understand the purpose in that. So would, I mean, I think that, I'm just speaking for myself, but if you're wanting the separate exit and it be covered for a vehicle to be able to pull in there and pick that patient up, I think that that's something that we could all look at if that was a purpose that you wanted for this facility, because we do have that in the medical center area.
Yes.
I think you're speaking to kind of a drive-through.
That's correct.
I think that we would want to just take away the canopy and to support our time.
And not have anything.
Yeah, because the drive-through would have to go to a different part of the building.
Right.
This isn't really where their patients would normally exit the building, if I understand, if I remember correctly.
Yes, we would not be interested in that.
Okay.
Well, if there are no other comments, I'll make a motion to approve without the carport, subject to all staff comments.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob? Councilwoman Abel Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilman Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes without the carport. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you. We'll work on that. Next, we're moving on to Platts and Plans. Our first item there today is the West Lawn Pavilion Lot Two. It's a Taco Bell. It's initial and final design and site plan review of a 2,432-square-foot restaurant and carryout restaurant located on 1.2 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Veterans Parkway. CVHC-7 LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. These next two items on the Platts and Plans portion of our agenda that I'll be presenting to you are both items that are in a planned development, the West Lawn PUD, that commits to meeting the gateway standards, so all the gateway design overlay standards in addition to what is in the program book. However, the process is different. Gateway projects have an initial design review during one meeting and later a final design review, and during the final design review, there is site plan approval as well. So it's an opportunity to provide that feedback in the process and really have the design team participate in that. I have, of course, had complaints and compliments on that process because it really gets the plans in good shape. Unfortunately, with West Lawn, you get one bite at the apple, so when I present this to you today and the next item, you don't have, or it's really only one bite, but you don't have that discussion that you would normally have. So what we have today is a project in the West Lawn Pavilion subdivision located in the West Lawn PUD. So the West Lawn PUD is much larger. It is on both sides of the interstate, both sides of Veterans Parkway, and there are several subdivisions in it, commercial subdivisions and residential subdivisions. This one is called West Lawn Pavilion, and the anchor tenant is Public Grocery Store, which is under construction. It was approved by Planning Commission, I think, in 2019, and they started construction, but it's been pretty slow. However, I did speak to the developer yesterday, and they do intend on being finished within the next few months, which I think that we're excited about, having the Publix here. This project is near the interchange, and West Lawn was originally approved in 2007. You can see from the file numbers that there have been several amendments since then, but one of the things that's been consistent is that it meets the GDO standards, particularly because, you know, the gateway has a lot of purposes. It predates design guidelines. It was basically one of the first opportunities we had outside the historic district, where the Planning Commission was authorized as the design review committee and also reviews the design for development here. It's near the interstate, and part of the purpose of design guidelines is for a community to distinguish itself from others. I use Florida as a bad example. If you go to Florida and you drive, you don't know when you've left one city and entered another. It all looks the same. It's very repetitious. We want to make sure that we create a place that's uniquely Murfreesboro, and so design guidelines help us do that. On top of that, we have the gateway, the gateway standards, where we think an area merits particular attention, quality, and elevated design. So that's where this is. This is near an interchange. It is not in the gateway overlay, however, in 2007, Planning Commission City Council at the time wanted to include it in those standards so that, because this is getting off the interstate, you're coming from Franklin, you're coming into Murfreesboro, and we want to look like you're coming into Murfreesboro, not like other communities. And so it's got multiple goals, but that's what's happening here. And so that's why you may see this Taco Bell and wonder maybe why a 2,000-square-foot building's coming to you. And it's all brick, and the formal open space that they're showing here, it's all part of the commitments for the development. So I'm going to pass around the material board for the Taco Bell.
I was hoping you were passing around Chalupas.
Did you bring Chalupas?
That would help. Hey, Margaret Ann, does this go well with the design of the Publix as far as the materials?
I did think of you during the process in particular.
I don't know that that's a good thing, but okay.
Because something you asked for is consistent with the gateway standards. The gateway says that the design should be in character and keeping of the GDO, and that the design guidelines say that you need to incorporate common design elements from adjoining developments where a concept or style exists, respect scale, massing, and materials. And twice, I put in writing and had the architect respond in writing that it's the same brick being used on the Publix.
Okay. Color to, not just material, okay?
Yes, and they'll come up and say it. But it's a good point. I mean, when you have these areas, you need to tie in the design so that they, you know, just brick isn't enough, but that there's more than that. And so they're using the same materials. And the, when I spoke to the developer yesterday, they haven't done their lease review yet, but it's something that they'll look for as well with the Publix Shopping Center. They'll want to make sure that's there. So what you have is initial and final design review on this meeting and site plan approval, so three elements of the plan for a restaurant that's primarily drive-through but does have a sit-in component. It's 2,432 square feet and located on 1.2 acres. The site is probably larger than you would typically see one of these restaurants looking for, but just considering the nature of the additional landscaping that's required and the formal open space, they've been able to utilize the landscaping. One of the most significant elements that I really, when I began working with them, said was very, very important, was that the elevation facing Veterans Parkway, which is a major arterial, looked like a front. We know that these fast-food restaurants generally have drive-through on one side, and on the other side, the majority of the parking and the entrance that you use. However, in our zoning ordinance and in our design guidelines, we, the buildings need to be oriented so that the fronts, or the fronts of the building address the streets. And so this building has frontage on one street, Veterans Parkway. It does have visibility from multiple sides, so from two shared access drives, one coming into the center and one behind the building. And of course, there's visibility from the parking area that's located to one side. In addition to that, the gateway requires four-sided architecture, and so that's what they're showing here. All four sides are similar in design and materials. And so on the back, they are using spandrel glass, just because the back of a fast-food restaurant, you don't want to see inside there. They're cleaning garbage cans and managing the spot, maybe taking a break. And so they do have some backlit spandrel on the elevation that's toward the grocery store, but what's facing Veterans Parkway is real storefront, which I think is important. The building is all brick with the exception of the glass or spandrel, so it does fit the materials that we're looking for. They've done some, in addition to metal coping on the building, they've done some soldier coursing to add some definition or shadow line to the roof line. I did ask them to do a perspective rendering, which is what I have before you, because in the gateway, and outside the gateway, I think, we don't want long, blank walls. There needs to be undulation variation in the wall plane, so the vertical element itself and in the roof line to add interest there. So we've seen what I essentially call fast-food rectangles. I mean, it's what they are, that have had to work in the gateway standards. Whataburger is a good example. Black Rifle Coffee, all these types of fast-food restaurants really have a rectangle, but we want them to create dimension and shadow line and interest in the wall. And so this gives you a little bit better of a perspective to see that these brick entrance features are pushed out from the facade of the building to add that shadow line. The brick adds texture to the building, and they've added variation in the roof line. I did ask them to provide the sightline study to you because it looks to me that the RTUs or the rooftop units were just a few inches above the parapet. And in Murfreesboro, we're mostly flat, but we're not all flat. And so when we look at the site layout of a building, you want to look at the elevation of the building, height of the building, and also the elevation of the streets, because that's what you're really going to be seeing. They've provided a sightline study, and they're going to present it to you for your consideration, but I did want to make sure that those RTUs were being screened. And if you, let's see, I have a stylus somewhere. I also have a finger, so here's the area that we were looking at. And so it's very small, but I, you know, don't want to miss it. And so they believe that based on the setback of these units, and I've got the roof plan as well, that they think that it will not be visible. And so I just wanted to present that as the opportunity that I saw with this building. Otherwise, they've really been interested in doing what they can to get the plans organized in a fashion that they believe that they'll be well-received today. We had staff comments. There weren't a lot left. A lot of them are the prior to CFO comments that are pretty standard. I did want them to show the rooftop units and some lighting on it, but other than that, the plans are in relatively good order. I'll invite the design team up in just a moment, but if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
I've got one question that seems to be popular of the past couple of restaurants. During fourth meal, is there enough parking to stage the cars?
Fourth meal?
Fourth meal.
Come up and say your name.
I understood that, too, Mr. Wright.
Iman Fadossi, I'm the franchisee and owner of this hopeful establishment. Ninety percent of our customers are going through the drive-through. We have more than adequate parking for any first meal, second meal, third meal, and fourth meal, sir.
Yokito Taco Bell.
Thank you.
What other questions, comments? Ms. Green, are you?
To talk through the design.
Okay.
Hello, Planning Commission. I'm Morris Hoover. I'm the architect for this project. We're very, we feel very fortunate and happy to have a shot at this beautiful site and this place on Veterans Parkway, and with the excellent help of staff with comments and suggestions. I think Margaret Ann covered pretty much everything I was going to say, really, about the efforts we've gone through to modify what everybody realizes on fast food are typically boxes, and nobody likes that. Architects certainly don't like it. So we like the undulated... So we like the undulating facade. We like the varied heights around the parapet. The issue of the HVAC unit, there are two units, the smaller is well below the lowest parapet height, so it's not in question. The larger unit is, it's some fraction less than three inches, two and five-eighths or something, and it is 128 inches from the closest parapet. So if you can imagine a triangle, it's 128 inches at the base, three inches at the height. That's the kind of sightline you'd have to leave at to be able to see that at all. And that's why we showed, prepared the drawing, and staff suggested that we take the property line in the middle of Veterans Parkway, I believe, and a few other spots. And we know that, from topography, we know what the elevations of those are. We computed actual sightlines for an NBA player that's eyeballs six feet above the ground and up to that thing, and you well miss the higher unit. So we feel like it's going to be taken care of. Somebody floated this idea, it sounds like a good one to me. You're going to see, unit or no unit, the parapet cap is a different color, and somebody said, why don't you paint the units the parapet cap color? And if you ever saw, if you were someplace and you saw a little bit of that unit popping above the wall, the same color as the closest wall in front of it, I'm not sure that you'd recognize that it was anything different than the building. So I hadn't thought of that. I just thought we would offer that. It would be easy to do. I can't imagine anybody could see that unit and understand what it was from any reasonable distance from the unit. But this will be an extremely unique Taco Bell. You'll probably never see another one that looks like this. We think it looks great. Staff gets a lot of the credit for pushing us to this level of, I think, excellence. I think it's going to be a great store. We'd love to be able to do it if you guys would approve our project. Any questions for me? Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey, Margaret Ann, can I ask you a question? Please, ma'am.
Was that the question?
The windows, do we have window sign restrictions at West Lawn PUD?
The window sign restrictions that would apply to the West Lawn PUD are those that are in our sign ordinance. There's no additional PSO. And it's my recollection that the sign ordinance says that window signs cannot exceed 25% of the area of the window. Does that sound right, Roman?
Sounds close.
And that number was in part at the request of our Murfreesboro Police Department, who want to be able to see inside buildings before they enter the buildings to assess the safety. And so it's 25%, if my recollection is correct, even outside here. So if you knew a Taco Bell that you thought might have more window signs than is permitted, you might want to let Teresa Stevens know if you were somebody else.
I'm not trying to be a Taco Bell rat, Margaret Ann. I'm just saying, I'm saying, Taco, no. These windows look very good. I'm just concerned about driving down veterans on my way to Publix and seeing, like, a giant six-foot-tall sign for a Baja Blast Freeze. Like, so I guess that's my question. There are so many windows that 25% is still a lot in this case.
It is a lot.
I'm just curious.
And I would, since you're talking windows, want to point out that some of this is real window and some of it's spandrel. The legend here will tell you, the real windows have this hatching pattern, so the real windows mostly are below the awning, so these are, look like they're real windows, and the architect can correct me if I've gone too fast and missed something. But if it doesn't have the hatching, like here, it's spandrel. And so spandrel glass, you wouldn't be able to get any window signage in.
Okay.
Because of how it's constructed. And then so if it's squared, it's a real window. If it's an S, it's, or a bad S, it's a spandrel glass.
You're making it worse, Margaret Ann. No, that's better. So only about half of it is actual window that signs could be placed in. That's all I had. I think it looks great.
And Ms. Green, since we're also doing site plan review, did you mention any, I mean, is parking, the dumpster, all of those things that we normally look at on the site plan? Are we, did you have any concerns on any of that?
I don't. They were able to address most of our concerns. We would ask that if you thought that you wanted to approve it today, that you would make it subject to all staff comments, because there are still some landscaping comments. Mr. Barbie has been working with the design team and really wants them to address. Some of the comments are coordination between master developer and out parcel builder. In this case, Taco Bell is the builder, and the developer is also the same entity building the Publix. There is the shared drive that runs along two sides of this lot, and the master developer is installing some of the infrastructure of those shared drives. They're not doing anything on this private site, so what we want to ensure is that that communication is happening, and they need to go back to that developer and revise the, that plan to make sure that they're speaking to each other. They're not there yet, but I think that that is not something that we would ask you not to hold up approval today, because it seems bog standard for us.
Just subject to all staff comments.
Yes, if you do that, that'd be great.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
If none, I make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Jacob?
Councilwoman Naval Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilman Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. I should pass this. Thank you all very much. Beautiful building. Thank you. All right. Our next item is West Lawn Commercial East Lot 1. It's initial and final design and site plan review of a 5,915-square-foot convenience store and a 6,300-square-foot gas canopy on 2.4 acres, zoned PUD, located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Unicorn National Developments, Inc. is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This is the second item that I discussed with you that is under the regular Platts and Plans portion of our agenda, that's not located within the Gateway Design Overlay District. However, the West Lawn PUD, which this property is owned, does commit to meeting those GDO standards. And as I shared, that was something that was initially put on this property in 2007, and it was a commitment made by the developer of the overall project, because the location of this property, it's on a major arterial, and it's very near the interstate interchange. And so we wanted to be able to have a presence when you enter Murfreesboro and distinguish Murfreesboro from other communities, which essentially is what our design standards do. I have the zoning map up, and you can see that West Lawn. I mentioned that it was larger, and it's even larger than what's on the screen, but it includes property located east of Veterans Parkway and property located west of Veterans Parkway. And there are various developments in there just across the street. So this project, let's see if I can, I've gotten stylus happy, I think, but this project is located here. The Taco Bell that you just looked at is across the street, and that's where the Publix Shopping Center is. Just south of that development are some medical users. So you have the TOA, which is Tennessee Orthopedic Alliance. You have MMC with their building under construction and their second MOB under construction. There's also Ascension St. Thomas located here, which is their micro hospital, which is where they took some of their beds that they had at the main hospital and put them out here to help facilitate those services. And then on the same side of the street, you can see that we, the developer of the project, has relocated Blackman Road, where it normally, it went straight down before and had a bad angle. Now Blackman Road goes like this and lines up at either a signalized or future signalized intersection. And so this is the relocated Blackman Road. And this parcel then has frontage on two arterials, one Veterans Parkway, a major arterial, and the second is the relocated or realigned Blackman Road adjacent to this property. The Blackman Road does turn, and because it turns, it's super elevated, and I couldn't talk if you tied my hands to my side, according to Ms. Knoll, who may not be here. And as a joke she sometimes says, I can't. But the super elevated is when the road kind of banks. I like to think of NASCAR. You're welcome. So the road is super elevated going into the site. And so we were talking about Taco Bell before and how it's important to consider the context of the property, the location of the property, where the view sheds are, in addition to the fact that the Gateway says it should be four-sided architecture with all four sides having compatible design, all accessory structures having compatible design. Also, you want to consider the view sheds. So it has the super elevated, realigned Blackman Road. And then also, there's a private drive. It's not, I don't believe it's a private street that runs behind the property. And that private street is being built by the developer. I think Mr. Harney is here. That is a way that, another way that, of course, you can see the property and you can access the properties. So it has frontage on two major arterials, and it has the back of the property along a shared drive, so there's visibility there. And then the project will actually share an entrance to Veterans Parkway with the future adjacent parcel, and we haven't reviewed plans for that yet. But one of our goals is to minimize driveways onto these major arterials so that we can manage the capacity and operations of our streets. If we can get these limited, then it's helpful, and they've been able to do that. So across from Blackman Road, realigned Blackman Road, just last month, you reviewed an MOB for this parcel directly across from this. It's a three-story building. I think it was well-received. They were able to modify the design to meet the Gateway standards, and so you have on one corner a three-story building, and then on this corner, proposed is a, what is sometimes called a C-store or convenience store and a gas station. And it's for a Wawa gas station, which aren't, none of those are constructed in Murfreesboro yet, but you have approved a location not inside the Gateway. I believe it was last month, but it could have been before then. And so this is for a Wawa, which apparently are in Florida. I've been told it's the Panera of gas stations. I don't know what that means, but I guess we'll find out when we start buying our gas from Wawa. I also did want to mention that the heading says that it's for a 5,915-square-foot building. The plan development says that convenience stores cannot exceed 5,000 square feet, so there's a limit to that. And the PUD says that because it borrowed the language from the zoning ordinance. That's our language in our zoning ordinance. Mr. Blomley was able to work with the applicants and exclude some of the floor area inside the Wawa, so that it brought the square footage down below the 5,000 square feet. There's a definition of floor area that our staff relies on that says some of the common spaces can be excluded. And so this is now, we got a planning director's interpretation, it's now below the 5,000 square feet, which would allow the use. You may have heard discussions that staff was having with applicants months back where we were saying, oh, the use is not allowed because it exceeds the 5,000 square feet. Well, the workaround for that is that the administrative decision's been made to exclude some of the internal square footage of the C-store there. So this is a master plan that shows some of the information that I was showing to you. The old Blackman Road is called Paul Patel Road. Paul Patel Road, and it's here and ends in the cul-de-sac. And then that three-story MOB on the corner. And then Liberty Financial is on Lot 7, if you're curious. The elephant in the room, of course, is Vanderbilt Medical, who have purchased property in this area, and I'll do a big V, how about that? So Vanderbilt's purchased the property here. I have tried to follow their application with the state for certificate need, but I haven't looked recently to see where they are with that. But I know that they have an intention of building a medical facility here, and I don't know what that'll look like. I do know that we have a children's medical facility in our, near our, in our GDO III. I'm not sure what they're wanting to build here, but Ms. Rush in the past has worked with them there. And so I think it's important to consider the context of what's around you. I think this is a daycare, but I haven't worked with that. Okay, so I'll get my notes. I did share with you that one of the differences between these projects and Gateway projects is you don't get that initial design review and then later the final design review. And so we share all of our comments today, and I have quite a few with this one, which I know that most of you probably are aware of. A lot of them have to do with architecture and some with site design. With our traditional process, we would provide feedback, initial design review, ask them to revise the building, and come back at final design review and see if you are comfortable with the revisions that have been made. But today, your options are to either approve it as they submitted, approve it with changes, defer it, or deny it. But it will not come back to you. And so I just wanted to share that with you, because with our Gateway projects, it's typically the project, or the process. I did ask for a material sample board in July. It wasn't submitted, and it wasn't submitted with a formidable.
If I could just say, when you gave us our options and you mentioned we could defer it, if we deferred it, it would come back to us.
It would come back if you deferred it.
All those other options, it would not come back to us.
No, the other ones would not come back to you. So if you approved it with conditions, you wouldn't see it again. Or if you denied it. I guess it would come back if you denied it. They would just have to bring something else back.
Oh, my gosh.
Margaret Ann.
Sandwiches. Your material sample board?
Are you bringing that up here for us?
Pass it around. I'm not going to pass it around, because it's too awkward. And I probably need to get rid of this. Part of the review is looking at these color renderings. They give you a good idea what the building is going to look like, but they don't tell everything. And so in our zoning ordinance, we actually have standards for material sample boards, the size they are, the size of materials, how they're presented, so that we can share it with you and you can see that. I think they were having trouble sourcing materials and didn't get it to us, but again, you don't see it again, so I wanted to bring this to you just in case. Get to the design of the site. Okay, so the building is designed with a C-store, which is in the dark gray area, and that is 5,915 square feet, and a 6,300-square-foot gasoline canopy located between the store and Veterans Parkway. One of the exciting elements is that they're considering putting electric vehicle charging stations in these parking spaces here, and maybe even Tesla. The negative of that is Tesla has the biggest equipment that you, that I have seen any charger have, not the actual charger itself, but the transformers and all the stuff that serves it. Initially, they were proposing to put all that equipment in the front here where it's most visible. I did ask for them to relocate it, and so they're showing it here. And so that's one of the site elements I think is important. Also, in the Gateway and outside the Gateway, maybe, but definitely in the Gateway, we talked about the location of the gas vent stacks just last month or the month before. We talked about it with 7-Eleven, making sure that's not located in the front yard. And so I asked them to relocate the vent stacks, either integrate it with a gas canopy or somewhere where it's less visible. The underground tanks are here, and they, the engineer is now showing the gas vent stack here. I don't know, hopefully it is possible to put it over there, but they did shift it, if you looked at the comments, to that location. Also, another element that I think is helpful is the formal open space that they have actually in the frontage of Blackman Road here mirrors exactly what was done on the adjacent MOB. So if you had the site plan of the adjacent MOB, you would see that the formal open space is a mirror, and I think that that might create a nice look when you come into this road. This is, of course, the entrance of Blackman Road. Some of our comments were that this site has a lot of pavement, excess pavement on all the sides, and so really asked them if they can find ways to do additional landscaping, but they really want to hold on to that pavement, because it helps with their site circulation, particularly with the fuel trucks. They were able to reduce it on, the north alley here is that private drive that I've mentioned, and so they were able to reduce the pavement a few feet in the back, which I do think helps, particularly because they're proposing outside storage along that northern, well, page-top northern elevation. The Gateway prohibits outdoor storage. However, we've allowed it when it's been screened so that it's not visible. And some examples would be the Thorntons on Med Center Parkway. They have brick columns and landscaping where you can't see the propane tanks or the Netflix machine, I forgot what they're called, Redbox, Redbox, and those elements, that they're completely screened. So we say, well, if it's completely screened as a part of the building or, and in some other way, then we've been more lenient. In this instance, they have not provided screening that satisfactory to staff. We don't believe that this outdoor equipment is adequately screened. Also have some concerns with the location of it. We think that additional landscaping can be done and a different material to actually screen that outdoor storage, but really have that as a concern as far as the site layout of the plan. I'm going to look through my notes. I told you quite a bit on here. They were able to provide, of course, the 5% formal open space, the 20% open space, and the setbacks. Since elephant in the room is probably my catchphrase of the day, elephant in the room for this project is the gasoline canopy. The proposed gasoline canopy is not consistent with the Gateway standards. It's outside of what we have advised other applicants to do. And I, just because I know that not everybody's been here for the entirety of the 20 years that the Gateway's been active, I did put these examples together, just so you can have that as a reference. I'm going to pull it up for you. I attempted to put them together in order that you've approved them, just for your reference. The most recent one is for the 7-Eleven, which also is located near an interchange. And they, they provided the pitched canopy on the roof and the brick columns with architectural detailing. And then this is the 7-Eleven that's actually in West Lawn. So just across the street from this project, the planning commission approved a 7-Eleven here, and they've got the pitched roof. Some of these don't do as good of projecting what they look like, but some are better. And then across the street is West Lawn Commercial, Lot 1. And this is Chodhary. Mr. Chodhary worked on this element. They didn't have a brand at the time, but they did show BP. This was the canopy that they've done just across the street. And then North Church, North Church Lot 18 is the lot that's near the interchange on Med Center that had the liquor store in addition to the gas station. And the 7-Eleven used them as inspiration for the canopy that they did recently. And so this is the gas canopy for them. The canopy that was not approved, that they initially came to us with, was, again, here with my hands, the airplane wings. So they initially came to us and wanted airplane wing gas canopy. And that was something that the, we did not approve because it wasn't consistent with the gateway. And this is another rendering of the airplane wing. It was a expensive structure. It just, the design was not architecturally compatible with what we were looking for. Race Track has the pitched canopy as well. One of the things that we look for are the colors and the fascia and a maximum of eight inches is what we allow, and that's what Race Track's showing here. This is Walmart. So Walmart also is the neighborhood market on Fortress Boulevard in the gateway, and they did a canopy. Felt like it didn't show as well in their rendering, so here's a picture of it. You can see that they also have a pitched roof. This was what Thorntons came to us with. For some reason, I don't have the Thorntons approved plans, but I have the ones that on Med Center weren't approved, and this is what they started with. And this is what it looks like when it's built. And you can see they have the pitched canopy. There are two other gas stations that I'm aware of that are in the gateway, but they were constructed before the standards were adopted. And so if you think of the one on the corner of Broad Street and Medical Center Parkway, where it has the barbecue, that one's pre-GDO. And then there's another one that has a donut shop on the corner of Thompson Lane and Robert Rose. That one was constructed before the gateway as well. They did some remodeling, and when they remodeled, they put corbels around it just to make it more interesting. But those are the only two canopies that are somewhat similar to what's being proposed. So I wanted to go through these examples just to give you that context because I know that not everybody has it. We've been very consistent with fuel canopies, saying that they need to have that pitched roof. And so it's something that I shared with the applicant. They, of course, want to come to you with their design, which, you know, we can appreciate that, but I thought it would only be fair to the other applicants who've developed in this area to share our standards and share that what we've had the planning commission do. And so this canopy, it, I think it's a little different than what you've seen with one out on 99 because they've added some more brick on the columns. Entirely, brick or stone columns are a part of the standard that we look at when we look at the gateway. And so they, I think they've raised those columns here. You see here the enclosure. The enclosure doesn't meet our standards because it should meet, be a similar architectural design as the main building. Of course, it's missing some of those elements. That's pretty easy stuff to take care of. It's something that we can get them to do before, before permits. The structure itself, though, also shared, had some opportunities. One of the things that we look for is for the structure to be entirely brick, stone or rock. There are secondary materials that are allowed, but we don't want them to become the primary material. So if you look at the top elevation, oh no, here goes my zooming abilities. This is the elevation that will be toward Veterans Parkway. So they do have two fronts, Veterans and Blackman Road. But on this elevation, I gave them some comments about materials and design. One is, the only materials that count for primary materials are brick or stone. So you only see that here, a little on the columns. I did get them to add the base eventually in here. So that's all the brick or stone building. You're required to have 35% void space, so the glass is 35%, but all this is secondary material. So that front elevation presents not as a brick structure, but it presents as a structure with, it's more glass, ephesus and hardy than it is brick or stone. Also shared with them that white ephesus or white stucco is not a material that we've approved. We're particularly concerned with it when it's behind signage. The other buildings across the street, we've had them do the brick or stone behind the signage because what this becomes is a way to fake the sign area. So you have the Wawa and having it white behind it makes the words Wawa stand out. And in a few years, when they rebrand, they'll paint it. And so it, it's a way to fudge the sign area. And so if you have that material behind where the sign is, it actually, it limits that as a concern, in addition to the white color being something that we've shared with other businesses. It's not just gas stations or key C stores is a concern for us. And so the white color, the white behind the signage, the facade being too much stucco and cementitious siding. I didn't comment on the columns because I thought that that would be maybe part of their whimsy or their detailing, but you may want to hear your comments on that. This elevation here that says side is not really a side, it's a front elevation. This faces Blackman Road. And so some of the things I asked them to do is look at our minimum void space here, so add some of that transparency and glass. If you can't have real glass, which we understand, there are ways to do interesting things in the facade of the building or backlight spandrel or other things you can do. But we really want to make sure that all four sides of the building speak to each other, that it's compatible with not just the GDO, but the overall development. This is the, I think, let's see here, this is the rear of the building. And you can see, you know, the outdoor storage. They're putting some of the cementitious slats there. They don't blend with the building. They look like a screen that you're applying to a building to maybe almost try to hide something, but doesn't quite hide it. And so that was an opportunity for us. Also, this elevation is not compatible with the, with the front elevation or the other elevations. It lacks that continuity with this development and the other developments. And then this is the side facing the chargers, the electric vehicle charging stations. And so I think this one really does mirror the other front, but there's really a lack of consistency in all of these elevations. Some of the comments that I gave them regarding architecture, particularly for the front, was to see if they could add any balance or symmetry to the building. If you look at this building, what kind of throws you off is this side is brick or stone, I'm not sure which. And this side is hardy, so there's no symmetry or balance. The door is over to the side instead of being centered. There's no prominence or visibility added to the entrance because this whole thing looks like an entrance. You don't really have the prominence that you would normally have in an entrance there. I also wanted to talk to them about the rooftop equipment, screening that rooftop equipment. Initially, it was some with some metal screen walls. And then I think with the resubital, they are adding, and I don't quite understand what's happening here, but from what I understand, a second parapet on top of the roof to screen that rooftop equipment. Our preference would be that the design be integrated and whole and that you just look at variations in that roof line to really screen that equipment instead of maybe putting a second parapet up there. But you can see they lacked balance, symmetry, repetition, rhythm, those sorts of things that we would normally see in a facade. If you don't mind, I'll look at my notes. Their storage, foresighted, materials, the material board. Some of the, so the requirement to have that pitched roof on the canopy is something that we've been holding people to in the gateway. It's not in the gateway standards. It doesn't say shall have a pitched roof. However, it has been our standard, much like across the street with MMC, where we've been saying 24-inch base, guys, along the whole thing. And I think that applicant came to you and said, well, we don't want to do the base. But planning commission said, we really want to stick to that because it's consistency, it's how we want to move forward and it's how we want to manage it. That's one of the similar standards. Same thing with overhead doors. The zoning ordinance doesn't say you cannot have an overhead door facing the street. However, using the tools that the planning commission, that the planning commission has and the zoning ordinance gives us, it does say that service areas need to be screened or integrated to the building. And so it's something that we've been having people do, no roll-up doors facing these major arterials. So this isn't a one-off or something that's unusual. And it's not something that they didn't know about before coming here because certainly we shared it. I did want them to have an opportunity to defend or not defend, but to present their design to you. I just wanted to share that staff wasn't supportive of it because it doesn't align with our standards. Makes it difficult for when I talk to the next person who comes in and tell them that they need to do something and explain why with this instance, it's different. This building is different than the one you looked at last month or the month before because it is held to the gateway standards. And so what I'm asking is for some consistency and continuity there. And so it is something that we're looking at. And so we just are sharing that staff hasn't supported it since it's been submitted, but we also understand that they want to ask for it. And by no means does that offend us, but I just think I have to do the other businesses a justice or a service by sharing the background on what we expect in this area where we have a higher standard. So with all that, do you have any questions before the design team comes up?
I really appreciate you taking the time to go through and kind of give us a lot of the history and everything, even for those of us that have been here through all of it. We may not remember all of it, so I appreciate that. And I think that the design team is going to have to have some miraculous statements or I'm just not feeling it at all on the number of things that do not meet our guidelines with this application and what we're looking at right here. I know we're bringing it because they want to present it to us, but it doesn't meet our guidelines. So let's see what they can say about, about that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we hear from the design team?
But it's, it's very similar to the one that planning approved last month, right? It's just, I think Ms. Jones's point was that the guidelines are different in this area.
I think her point is that the guidelines, the standards are different. It's similar, but it's different.
Okay. It just, I don't have your eye, Margaret Ann, so when I look at it, it looks really similar. But I know you pointed out some things that, that were different, but the standards are different, so.
They've added, I think, more brick, which is probably what's the most different.
So, so in your opinion, the, there's, it's not just the canopy this time? You, you weren't the planner last month, were you?
I wasn't.
Okay. The, I think the, the team member who presented it was more concerned about the canopy. This is what we had a lot of discussion around. Do you have a lot of concerns about the canopy or you're more so the building?
I do have concerns about the canopy. And I do have concerns about the building.
Okay.
Yeah, the canopy is just like a, I would think a given that it doesn't meet our gateway design guidelines. And I voted for it last month, but totally different, totally different request here.
Right. Is the canopy the same?
Mostly, except for there's more brick on the columns of this canopy.
I don't remember the canopy last month having, maybe on this, I think.
I just feel like we have a lot of things that need to be addressed to get this to where we can approve it in the gateway, with gateway design guidelines. So let's get at it.
Mr. Taylor's chomping at the bit.
Mr. Taylor is going to tell us all about it. Tell me why I'm wrong, Mr. Taylor.
I never attempt to tell you that. Matt Taylor of SEC, I've got the architect as well as representatives of Wawa and the developer here with me as well. I'll just, I'll start with the canopy. It's on the screen as well as the dumpster. So we sent some additional exhibits to Ms. Green earlier today. I realize that was late in the hour, on the dumpster. And so we're going to take the bottom and create the base so we can add, we'll add stone down there to comply with that requirement. I think there was a little confusion on how to comply with that, so discussed that with the architect earlier today. And so that, that's not a problem. As far as the canopy goes, we did add extra brick all the way to the top as Ms. Green requested. But the requirements are no different in the GDO as they are in the design guidelines. The verbiage is exactly the same. And so we are simply, again, complying with the GD, with those requirements in a different manner. And so it is entirely a slanted roof. It has a profile to it. Both, it's thicker on the back than it is on the front. It also has an edge. You can really see the difference in the profile in that particular perspective view right there. Again, the requirements are no different. How people have met those requirements, you saw several different examples right there. I could nitpick some of those. Some of those feel heavier, some of those I don't like as well. Some of them I like perfectly fine. This is a different way to meet that requirement. The requirement is, the verbiage is no different between the two.
Personally, I don't have anything wrong with the canopy.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I, I don't have anything wrong with the canopy. It's fine with me.
Even though it's in the GDO?
Yeah.
The building itself, if you look at the percentages, we, the stucco is a very small percentage of the overall building. And so I think it's approximately 15% of the overall building. And so brick is at 41% of the overall building and stone is at 22%. Those calculations are on the plans. Ms. Green mentioned screening HVAC. We had provided some 3D perspectives to show that from the street, we do screen those HVACs with the second parapet that we had added at her request. In the 2D version that you see right here, it shows maybe that's still visible by a couple inches in that 2D version, which is not a, you're never going to look at it like that in real life. We've committed, we're going to raise the parap, that second parapet a few more inches to make sure even from that view that it is screened. There was concern about this elevation right here and those windows, those are real windows. And so there's not a need for backlighting on those real windows. We've added this, excuse me. We added the pop-up on the roof line right there as well as that building projects out along that side. We understand that design guidelines and the GDO require a, us to not basically turn us a back to that. It's to treat it like it's another front, although we don't necessarily have to have a door. We don't want to treat that as a front or as an entrance, but we wanted to respect that side that turns, turns toward Blackman Road right there. So we added the projections, we added the windows, actually added some signage, I believe, on that side of the building. Ms. Green mentioned the screens on the back. We give her an exhibit and I'm happy to share that with you all. I'd say we'll just convert that into the building materials that are directly beside of it, which is exactly what she had mentioned that, say, Thorntons or Race Track had done previously, instead of those panels. We don't have a problem with that. It'll blend in with the, the rest of the building. As far as symmetry, I, I got that comment. I did a simple word search in our whole zoning ordinance. The only place symmetry is mentioned in there is inside of our airport overlay zone. Nowhere else. What it does say is you need to know where the entrances are. The entrances need to be pronounced. I think you absolutely know where to walk to go to the front of that building right there when you look at that. I don't think there's any doubt about that. I think it achieves exactly what we're supposed to achieve. And then if we want to talk about the ephesus or stucco there, it's not a, it's not a stark white. I can let the architect talk about exactly what color that is. They've got an example. We understand we've got to work on the material board a little bit. We've committed to making sure before any building permits, they'll get the right size and cut down their brick samples and stone samples for that. The ephesus there, they, they like that look. I think we've got multiple examples of that in the, in the gateway itself of that signage and that exact same setup. So they, they would prefer to leave that there. They think it looks good, it suits their store. But we feel like we do comply with most, with the regulations. We may meet them in a little different fashion, but we feel like we do comply with those.
So a lot of the things that you said that you've committed to that I guess were different from what we're looking at or for what, so you've committed to those since this was submitted?
Yes, ma'am. So let me, let me hand out the Let me hand out these hard, actually, I can hand out hard copies, or I think Mr. Blomley said they're actually, he had downloaded them.
Yeah, it's on the, yeah.
So on this particular view, right here, we're going to raise that second parapet back there, the three or four inches, whatever that number is, to make sure that HVAC is screened. Again, we show that in our perspective views from the street, which is what we always do, but we're going to raise that, so there's no doubt about it. And so that's what I'm calling out at each of these other locations as well. And then these screened walls here, we're going to, we're going to take that stone base and that brick body and just continue it across there so that you don't see anything that's stored back there, whether that's a gas meter, whether that's an ice machine, whatever that is, we'll continue that across.
So two comments.
Yes, sir.
I get from a percentage standpoint that the brick or stone, based upon the numbers that you threw out, you are meeting the guidelines. I think that from a front, frontage portrayal, that somehow, I realize the whole building meets the guidelines, but in my view, you would think that the frontage would portray those guidelines, and I'm not sure that they do based upon Margaret Ann's comments. It sounds like that several of the other things that, you know, that were talked about can be or will be rectified. Just like Ms. Jones said, we voted on this canopy last month or whenever it was, but it was outside of these guidelines. You know, you're making the case that it meets the guidelines. My only hesitation is that we've got two or three folks that had applications in this same area and we, you know, we made them, we made them doing some, probably something different than what they wanted it to do with respects of the canopy. So I, you know, that part's tough.
I respect the fact on the canopy, I do respect that. I think that if those applicants were coming in, they want to do a straight, flat canopy. And I've represented some of those, and that's what we're trying to avoid. The requirements say a pitched or a flat, you know, not a flat canopy essentially. And these requirements, I think, started even before the GDO. I remember the pilot on South Church Street was the first time I remember hearing about that conversation. And I'm not even sure our GDO existed at that point. And so we've been enforcing that for quite some time, and happens to be that a lot of our gas stations have been in the GDO because that's where our newest arterial corridor came from. And we like what that looks like, so we want to continue, you know, we don't like the flat canopy. We want to continue that along our other corridors. We 100% agree with that. I think if you look at this, this creates the architectural interest and the appeal. It's not that flat canopy. It provides some aesthetic, it provides some visual difference than that standard flat canopy. I drove by one last night from Race Track. I think it was in Wilson County or Lebanon. I look at that, and I'm like, that's, that's why we don't want that. It lacks an interest. And this, if you see this in person, if you look at this, it provides that interest. It's exactly the intention, exactly the reason that that is inside of our design guidelines. As far as the front reading like a brick or a stone, I'm not, I'm not sure where we could change. I might let the, ask the architect to come up and talk through a few things to see if she's got some ideas on exactly what could be changed, if that would make that read more like that brick or stone, if she can.
And I'm going to, I would just like to mention, I want to make sure the screening for the outdoor storage, that was not sufficient, that we addressed that, and I apologize. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Halliburton. And I'll see y'all next time.
And I'll also have to exit. Sorry about that, but we still have a quorum, so business can be.
Sorry. It's okay. Bye, guys.
These are tough decisions to face.
Good afternoon. I'm Melanie Hicks. I'm a senior project architect with Wawa.
Hi.
And I represent our store design team. And I'll see if I can maybe add some reasoning to some of the comments that we had here today. Can everybody hear me well? I feel like I'm not speaking up. Okay, I apologize. To go back to the canopy for just one moment, we feel that it matches the roof that we have on the building, our slanted roof, so it ties into the building in that respect. So we're recreating continuity with architectural, not just from materials, but also structural components on the building. So I'm hoping that maybe that might lead a little bit more interest into the approval for that look of the canopy. As far as the front of the building, we didn't have a whole lot of background on examples for what was going on the adjacent properties for, of this site. Now that we were able to see the Taco Bell, that gave us a little bit of information that we were kind of lacking when we came in. As far as the ephesus on the front of the building, we would like to keep as much of that signage area as possible, but we could reduce the scale of it. We can maybe bring some of the masonry up along the sides and just maybe have the center area with the ephesus. I know it was mentioned that, you know, when, and I apologize if I got the intent wrong about the signage or rebranding or anything like that, that, you know, this is, this is our building and this is our signage that we've had for a long time and will continue to have. The only reason it would get replaced, just for freshening up, there's no intent there. If there's any repairs that would need to be done on the ephesus, it also makes it easier to get in there. If for some reason there was a problem, there was damage to the signage or whatever, the ephesus is an easier material to repair the signage to. I do feel that all four sides kind of lend an aesthetic continuity to them. We're using the materials, with the exception of the ephesus, on two of the elevations. We're representing each material on each four elevation. As mentioned by Matt, we will update the screening. That was not something that we were aware of prior. This is a screening that we've used on several other locations, so we are just going with our prototypical standard in that respect. Are there any other questions, or was there anything I missed that you might need some addition?
Yes, I have a question. So do all your stores have the same canopy, like you're presenting to us?
I'm sorry.
I said, does all the stores have the same canopy?
Yes, that is our.
That you're presenting to us?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, the slope of the column, or, excuse me, the slope of the roof is something that even our stores in Mid-Atlantic and Florida, we have, all of our canopies are like that.
All of them?
All of them.
I've driven by.
I believe the brick column, that part changes.
Yes, we don't, our prototypical usually, for instance, we have stone that we use in our current market, and it goes up to about eight feet. And then we have an exposed steel tube that goes up to support. So that is different than what our current.
I guess my question is, is all the canopies angled?
Yes, sir.
Every one of your stores?
It's a single slope, like that, yes, on all of them.
And it looks, I've seen them in person, they look good.
The scale of what you saw on the screen may be deceiving. We have a.
And I think right before you joined, Reggie, we, we had that same discussion, and someone from Wawa was telling us you guys have like a trademark or a patent or something on that exact slope. So they, I had the same question when the first Wawa came to Murfreesboro, and they were very adamant that it's their brand and there's never been a deviation.
There you go. I took a picture of one. That's right beside Disney World.
But the columns would have brick all the way up.
Yeah, we are, we will raise the brick to.
I see that too.
Like literally right beside Disney World.
Did you see that shot?
Oh, yeah, stop.
Did you make that break? That model?
Yes. The area that Matt just highlighted there, you know, we could make that brick to reduce the alternate or the secondary material and increase the masonry material.
I think that, I mean, I'm not a design person by any stretch of the imagination, but just basically trying to meet the guidelines. Granted, I understand we're meeting the percentages based upon the whole project, the whole building, but the face of the building is, I think, one of the reasons why those guidelines are there. It would be my comment. And so if, that would be great, and even if you could reduce the ephesus portion of where Wawa is, that, and not necessarily have to reduce the Wawa sign, I think that would be helpful also to try to come to a compromise, I guess is the best way to say it.
Well, we would like to meet your expectations there, yes. Yeah, we could, you know, do something in here. Oops. Clear. Clear. Sorry.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, though, this is a, there's only one bite at the apple, so you, they will want, they will need to choose to defer. Can we?
Unless they tell us what they like, if they're, tell us what they're going to do and we like it, we could just put that as, as part of the motion.
I think I'm hearing there's more changes than.
I did want to mention, the changes that were offered, I haven't seen yet, haven't been discussed with me, were sent minutes before the meeting. I, as a staff member, would be most comfortable with you all, with being able to review the changes and not maybe just a verbal agreement. This, you know, this is, we've been working on this for weeks, if not months, and this information isn't new, and I've shared it, and I knew that today would go this way, and it, you know, it's not comfortable for me, but I do still feel like I need to share the information I have. Materials Board isn't just a check on a box, it actually helps us review the plans. I'd love to have that with the review of the project, the screening, I'd like to see what that looks like. I think it's, I hesitate sometimes, and today I said, oh, that can be a priority permit condition, but I'm just concerned about the gravity of changes and not having planning commission's review of it. I think you've already shared with you the areas where I have some concerns about opportunities, but particularly would just want to make sure what happens here is what you want to happen, even if it's different than I've advised the clients. So I just wanted to say, like, I really, I haven't had any conversations with the architect other than the pre-app meeting, which on Zoom, I've shared comments, but there's been not a lot of back and forth, just because they wanted to get in front of you and get your ideas of it, and I shared that I would share what I did with you today. I just, they're, I mean, there's quite a few of them, so they're cumulative, and so I think there's that. So I wouldn't want to be the one, excuse me, I wouldn't want to be the one to make the decision that you're okay with it, if you know what I mean. Because they already know what I think, but I'm more interested in planning commission.
Thanks, Margaret Ann.
I just wanted to say, we're fine making these changes and coming back next month. So I talked to my client, we're fine doing that. And so if we want to talk about anything else before we, I think we got clear direction on the brick on the front and the ephesus, plus all the changes we already said we would do. Was there anything else that y'all wanted us to look at?
Are y'all okay with the canopy?
I'm good with the.
I'm, yeah.
Not personally, but, I mean, no. Because I, I mean, we've set a precedent amongst a lot of the other gas stations that have come before us, and I was a no on the, on the previous canopy, so I'm going to be a no on this one as well. I just don't think it matches the aesthetic, and I, and I, and I don't, I don't, I just don't like it, I'm being honest. I still think it represents a flat surface, even though it's pitched.
Well, if they choose to defer, this gives them more time to meet with individual members.
Is that a motion?
I think they'd prefer to defer it than us make a motion, so they've chosen to defer it.
I think we still do.
And do we need a motion, or Matt, are you saying you're deferring it?
Yes, sir. We'll just, we'll defer till next month or whenever we have the plans in shape to bring back with the revisions we talked about today.
Okay. So no votes needed?
So I think, no, I think you would need to vote to defer, and I think that we would need to, we have his consent, but we still need to vote to defer, and I think that, that we would need to set a timeframe with which to bring it back. And, you know, like, as we, as we mentioned with Dutch Brothers, the maximum time, I think you could defer would be six months, but I think our ordinance would allow you to defer it up to a month and potentially longer with the applicant's consent. Mr. Hankins, am I stating that correctly?
I believe so. You're right with the, with the 180-day max period. So, Mr. Taylor, if y'all feel good about a month, we can say a month. If y'all want some flexibility, and when you, when you bring it back, we can say 180 days, and then y'all bring it back whenever you're ready.
Good.
And I'll just remind you that Dutch Brothers felt good about a month, and they came back and had to have you vote on it again to give them more time. So I say, under promise, over perform. If they think they can do it in a month, maybe they give themselves, I'd advise Mr. Taylor, give themselves a little extra time, but, but with the condition that they can bring, they can bring it back when they're ready. It's not like staff will stop them from bringing it back, but I just don't want them to get in this thing where they have to keep bringing it back to you if they're not ready and say, will you give us another motion to defer? Will you give us another motion to defer? Which what happened with Dutch Brothers.
Somebody just make a motion.
I'll make a motion to defer it for two months if they want to bring it back in a month. It's fine with me.
Second.
All those in, oh, Ms. Jacob.
Chairwoman, Eva Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Chairman Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Did I ask for chairs?
I thought I heard Mr. Silas.
Yeah, you did.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I got it.
Okay. Moving on to the next application, Riverview Cove, Section 2, master plan and preliminary plat for 41 lots on 23.5 acres, zoned RS15, located along Moccasin Trail, Old South Properties LLC is the developer. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Halliburton, members of the planning commission. This next item we have for your review and consideration is a preliminary plat. As stated, this is for Riverview Cove, Section 2. This is a continuation of the Riverview Cove subdivision because of the addition to the master plan and the addition to the existing subdivision. Again, that is why it's required to come to you all today with this addition to the Riverview Cove subdivision. The purpose of this preliminary plat is to build out, the continuation to build out for Riverview Cove subdivision, to create 41 lots of record, to dedicate public right-of-way common area and record the necessary easements. Here, you can see on your screen again, the continuation shown here with Riverview Cove as being Section 2, the common area, the pickleball court and pavilion in that common area. Staff was able to review this subdivision, this continuation of Riverview Cove, and had some conditions, comments made for Riverview Cove, Section 2. A number, the one that we wanted to highlight the most in our staff report was this discussion about the potential build out with Section 3. During staff's review of Riverview Cove, Section 2, we wanted to be sure that if there, any build-out scenario, network scenario with Riverview Cove, Section 3, that they, that the applicant and development team make plans to have a connection made to the western stub connection of Avon Road. You can see here on your screen, we prefer, we strongly. You can see here on your screen, we prefer, we strongly encourage, we recommend that they come in with any future development plans for Section 3, that they make a western stub connection along Avon Road. The eastern stub connection with Avon Road is a little bit more substandard, there would be a lot of difficulty with developing that and having that connection. So staff worked early on with the development team, the applicant team, to make sure that that was discussed, made aware and that should any plans be made in the future for Section 3, that this is the connection, this is where the connection be made. Beyond that, though, there was no other outstanding concerns beyond the comments made between staff and the development team. We have those conditions of approval listed out for the next steps for the continuation of the subdivision and staff recommends that any approval of this preliminary plat be made, subject to all staff comments. I'm here for any questions in the development team, SEC, and I believe Mr. Bobo is here as well.
Any comments from the development team or the applicant? No, okay. Thank you, Joel, or any questions for Joel? All right. Any comments or motion with respects to the application?
I'll move to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Jacob.
Councilwoman, Eva Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilman Wright? Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next application is Albion at Murfreesboro Apartments, the site plan for miscellaneous improvements at an existing apartment complex in conjunction with an increase of density from 15.7 to 22.5 units per acre on 16-acre zone, PRD located at 285 North Rutherford Boulevard. Albion Residential Developer is the developer, excuse me.
Good afternoon, commissioners, council. As you can see on the screen, this particular project site is at 285 North Rutherford. It is located and has four access points to it, one off of Louise Street that goes out to North Rutherford Boulevard, their primary entrance on Alumni Drive, one entrance on City View Drive and one on East Main Street. You may recall on this particular project site, you looked at last year and council had final approval in January for a PRD. This is one of the several termed bifurcation projects within the city that's basically taking offline four-bedroom, four-bath units, the student housing that we traditionally saw, and is converting those predominantly into two-bedroom, one-bedroom or studio units. You all approved, council approved for that increase in density and that's why you see the density is at 22.48 units to the acre and that's within the existing building. So the reason the unit count goes up is they're taking offline all of those four-bedroom, four-baths, but it decreases the number of overall bedrooms from 816 down to 654, which is sizable, about 164 bedrooms less than it has today. You may recall on this particular project, it's one of our more tough ones for the simple fact it has quite a bit of what we call porous asphalt surfaces on it that have been, as the applicant bought the property and did multiple studies and technical reviews, found out part of the reason it hadn't been flowing properly is they seal coated those areas that were supposed to drain. So they've worked very diligently, Bill Huddleston with Houston Steel, Justin Tringle with the applicant and our engineering department to where you are with this red drawing. And this is basically all-new piping that they will be adding to the site that is adjacent to those areas that should have been draining and basically draining back to the area that used to be. The volleyball courts will become the ponding basin and then they're also adding some areas of permeable pavers here, here, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, here, here and here. A lot of permeable paving, so a lot more than they had anticipated, but we have worked diligently with the developer to identify a workable phasing plan for both, that work in the parking areas. So with this drawing here, all the green areas would be kind of Phase 1, that would be taken on first to construct the ponding basin and those trench areas cover back over those trenches as they're getting buildings vacated. With the amount of parking that they have on site and the reduction of bedroom counts, they have about 187 surplus parking at the end of the day, so they can easily rotate out 100 parking spaces at a go with loss of, of the units not being online. So Mr. McKnight asked for, and it was included in your packet, kind of this parking requirements as they are phasing project areas and pulling on and offline buildings and we believe it's a workable solution for the entire site. The other thing that we wanted to make sure of, and you might have seen, they've been doing work out there for a while, they first started with those buildings that were not involving bifurcations, but they were upgrading the entire facilities on the inside with new low-flow devices, which were required for our sewer department to be in place, but they were refreshing all of the, basically carpeting, paint. I think some of them had upgraded appliances, those sort of things. So as they've been working through it, they just finished Building O and moved in their first set of students for the first bifurcation component and really the list that you have on the side here shows those improvements that they're going to have completed by the time Building P, the larger building there, comes online. So what we tried to do is make sure that the improvements that were closest to the buildings that were coming online were also being done at that point in time and not waiting, for example, landscaping till the very end of a project or waiting for the paving at the end of the project. We were really trying to tie those two, once your construction crews are out of those areas, you should be able to finish up landscaping and a lot of the work. And the other thing, of course, is making sure building safety improvements are put in place. So you may have already seen, they've already constructed a fence along this portion, which PD said was kind of the biggest area of concern for them, for crime, as well as closing off these three access points onto the backside of the project. So we thought that those were kind of important features to get on board as soon as possible. And then you'll notice in the phasing plan here, there are a couple of areas that are asterisked off that we believe are fine to get in place as long as they, before we do the next phase, permit issuance. And you'll notice included in that list is some of that trenching work and drainage work that really impacts the entire site. So we're trying to work back and forth between school year timing, which you know, school's coming on board again recently, but we looked at this in light of the entire plan development book and all of the improvements that you saw in the PND book, excuse me, PRD book, are included and implemented in this plan. And so staff again appreciates all the work that Houston Steel and the applicant have worked on. I think this is one of my toughest projects since I've started work here at the city and you would think that it's easy, but sometimes the hardest are large-scale sites that have a lot of problems to start with. So with that, I think from a phasing standpoint, they are looking at having the entirety of the entire project done by end of August next year. So they still have, you know, a couple of, two more phases of the project, but again, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at the project site, it is coming along quite well on the inside. This is not a required public hearing because it is within their plan and development book, it's a regular site plan review and if you have any questions of the applicant or their engineer, they're available or myself.
Any questions for Ms. Smith? Does the applicant want to add any more? Okay. Questions, comments from the planning commission?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Jacob.
Chairwoman, Eva Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilman Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
For the record, Ken, I'm not coming for your job, I'm really not.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, the next application is Keeneland Commercial Lot 9, site plan for 3,600 square feet, convenience store with eight-pump gas canopy on .74 acres, zone, commercial highway located at 2135 Manchester Pike, ME Properties LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Ken, Commissioner. This project is a property that we are excited is getting redeveloped. Over the last several years, it's had some difficulties, some code compliance and definitely difficulties in repurposing the site as it used to be a self-serve car wash that at some point in time, somebody filled in all of the drainage areas for the site, which made it really difficult to use as a car wash site. The new proposal require, looks at scraping and replacing the building and replacing with it an eight-pump gas canopy and small 3,600 square foot convenience store that has some food preparation in the building. Due to that food preparation, it did require a sewer variance. That sewer variance was considered by our council back June 29th and was approved. And then this site also sits along a, our 2040 major transportation plan recommendation for a three-lane cross-section to move to a five-lane cross-section. So our traffic division did look at that and we do have adequate right-of-way today and they made sure that all of the utilities and improvements to the site would not hinder that widening at, at some point in time in the future. And of course, they would be subject to the impact fees that would help offset those improvements when they're constructed. We did approve about a year ago, a property on the south side of this area that did need a little bit more right-of-way and was taking care of a right-hand turn lane, but at this particular site, because of its location adjacent to, I believe it's the Thornton's, they believe that it needed to be done at the same time when that section of the roadway is constructed. So the applicant's engineer is here in the room, I believe. Mr. Matt Taylor?
No, this is, this is Chris McGuire. Bill, are you representing Chris here?
Okay, he'll be representing Chris. And we did look at the architecture for this particular project and worked closely with Mr. Picklesheimer on the view of the project site because it is a corner lot, it is a little bit more visible. See if I can get this down. Sorry to confuse you, Matt, on this project, we just always get a project from you every month. There we are. So you can kind of see on this building, the gas canopy does include the angled pitch roof that we generally see based on our design guidelines citywide. You don't have a straight, flat roof surface and then the building itself incorporates stone brick and very little ephesus. We did have them do the calculations here on the side and that ephesus is definitely a secondary or tertiary material. We did ask for unification to do the ephesus on the cornice molding to go all the way around the building so that those column features actually stop, so you get a very clear base, building and cap. And those elevation sides that really don't have very much opportunity for real windows, they did put in faux windows with canopy details and those sort of things in it. The one thing that is unique about the site is you will see that there is a trash enclosure here at the front of the building. There's not much room where you can put it on this site because the opposite side of the building has some drainage issues and terrain that is not conducive to putting it in that place, so we did look at that having the stone all the way on the building so that it can blend as seamlessly as possible into the building itself. And with that, it does meet all of the city standards for parking, circulation and as you may recall, gas canopies can set into the regular building setbacks and it meets those following categories, which I think it only goes about five feet into the 42-foot setback on a corner lot. So with that, if you have any questions.
I've got one that just, you got brought up at council and I've been thinking about it ever since. Is there any two gas stations in the entire city that are directly adjacent to each other?
Most of them are opposing corners, so you might see like Middle Tennessee and, you know, where you'll have one on one corner and one will be directly across.
Sitting side by side.
Yeah, I don't know if, if we have any of those in the city, but I will say, this particular site, we've been probably trying to repurpose it for the last two years and everybody tries to repurpose that existing building, which if you've seen the existing building, we're very happy about a renovation. Gas station may not be the best, but the main thing we wanted to make sure is from a gas and the amount of traffic that's hitting the site that our transportation folks were fine with it. And I think because this is an area that they're looking at widening to five lanes at a point that they felt comfortable with it and they felt comfortable with it being deferred with a city project rather than them building it in the T-dot right-of-way with their project, just because it's already difficult to repurpose this existing site. But yeah, I'm going to have to look around town because I, I don't know where we have them side by side, at least not two new ones.
Yeah.
Usually they are across the street.
I didn't ask it at council, but it was asked and ever since then I've been pondering.
Let me know when you see one.
All right, any further questions for Ms. Smith? Mr. Huddleston, do you have anything to add?
Yes.
All right.
All right, any further questions, comments, motions?
Don't everybody speak up at once.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Is there a second?
That's what I thought was going to happen.
According to the rules, the vice chair may second.
Um, I'll second it. Ms. Jacob, this is going to be interesting. Ms. Jacob.
Councilwoman, Eva Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilman Wright?
No.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Oh, but y'all couldn't second me, but you could vote, yeah? Seriously? It's on it.
All right, moving on to new business, zoning application to amend the existing PND zoning for Rutherford Collegiate Prep PND located along Manson Pike, Ryan Companies is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Good afternoon, everyone. We've come to the part of the agenda where there are new business items. We were asked the commission to schedule a public hearing. So this is a project that was just recently through the planning commission and the city council. It's a zoning for planned institutional district for Rutherford Collegiate Prep. After they'd gone through the process and through the site plan process and were working on their project and construction plans, realized that they needed to add additional square footage. So as they looked at their building, they really wanted to keep the site layout and the building shell pretty much the same as what was originally approved. That way they can start thinking and working about getting their construction plans and they decided to add the square footage internal to the building, so where the auditorium space was. space was, where they were gonna have maybe basketball hoops, they decided to add a second floor so that the auditorium space will be shorter. It'll still be kind of a gymnasium sort of space, but there will be a second floor now above, so they won't be able to do indoor basketball, but they will have some additional room for classrooms. So they are adding square footage. It's going from 56,000 square feet to 61,000 square feet. It will allow the ability to increase the number of students. The program book was originally approved for 770 students. They are now asking for a maximum capacity of 1,000 students. They're gonna increase the number of classrooms to accommodate those extra children from 33 classrooms to 41. And of course, this would correspond with additional teachers that will be staffing those classrooms. They're also gonna increase the building height from 35 to 40 feet as they were looking at the rooftop equipment, realized that the parapet screening needed to get a little bit taller in order to accommodate that height. So that, in essence, is what the amendment is that they're requesting for the program book to this PND, and we are asking the planning commission to take that into consideration and schedule a public hearing for September 6, 2023. Their representative, Mr. Matt Taylor from SCC, is here to answer any questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Rush?
None for me.
I move to set the public hearing.
Second.
September 6?
Yes.
Ms. Jacob?
Councilwoman Naval Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilman Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
All right. Next application under new business is zoning application for approximately 12 acres located along Medical Center Parkway to be rezoned from commercial highway, GEO 1 and PSO, to PCD, GDO 1 and PSO. The Avenue Big V or Big Five Property Group applicant.
Thank you. The last item on our agenda today under new business is for you to consider an application that our department has received for the property owner of the Avenue's Lifestyle Center. Big V is the third owner of this property originally developed by Cousins Faison, which was a partnership, then sold to Heinz Group, who then sold to Big V. Heinz moved across the street to the Clary Park Development and started creating those commercial out parcels along Medical Center Parkway and the apartments and townhomes that are part of their development. The Avenue's has been an area, a retail area in Murfreesboro that we've all, I think, been proud of, and it was a game changer when it came to Murfreesboro, quite frankly, Middle Tennessee, because most of the other developments weren't nearly quite the quality that was here. And part of that is the GDO overlay because we have standards that we apply to the development here that require high-quality design, and it looks a certain way, but also the private covenants on this property that have been particular about the type of tenants that can go here. So some of those out parcels, you don't see fast food because it's a part of the development. They don't allow that. Time has passed, and Big V now has a desire to change some of the ownership regime for the property. The property was set up by Cousins Faison to have mostly leased parcels along Medical Center Parkway. What you do when you lease areas as opposed to create lots of record is you remove the design standards that would be required. So when you add a property line anywhere to a property, then there are some subdivision regulations, there are some zoning ordinance requirements or design guideline requirements that would now apply to the property. In the gateway, we have standards that say that parking lots have to have at least 10 or 15 feet from the adjacent property, and it really adds, it seems like a very small standard, but it adds to the overall aesthetic of the area. Along Medical Center Parkway, which is a major arterial, will require 25 feet of landscaping. So these lots along Med Center were set up as leased parcels. Most of them weren't set up as lots of record. There are a couple of exceptions. You can see them on the map. One is Culvers. Another is, I think, the drive-through with Starbucks. I don't know what it's called. So most of these lots have buildings on them, and you can see Chili's is one of them, Buffalo Wild Wings, which recently remodeled the Macaroni Grill significantly, a building, and of course, you reviewed those plans. They would like the opportunity to sell these parcels as, I think fee simple is probably the right term, but it may not be, but sell actual lots of record and not just have them be leased parcels. And so to create lot lines, you need to meet our standards, and our standards are extra landscaping, bigger landscaping, separations. But this property was set up 15 years ago to not be that way, so they would need to go in, retrofit, take out some parking, add some landscaping to meet our standards, or they have the option of creating those lot lines where the leased line parcels are. And our staff and our administration department advised the applicants that that would be probably the way that made the most sense, and so where you see leased lines, make those property lines. To do that, they cannot ask for variances because to get a variance from BZI, it can't be a self-created hardship, so that's not a route that they can go. And so the option to them is, in the dead of night, build something and not tell us, which they don't want to do, or get a plan development so they have an application for a PCD, Plan Commercial District, is the name of the zoning district, and they've got a program book that they've prepared and is in your packet today to consider allowing these to be created as separate lots of record. That creates quite a laundry list of exceptions, but really, it allows it to look and maintain what's there now. And so they've identified the exceptions. They don't want these individual parcels to provide their own formal open space because this Lifestyle Center was supposed to do that. It's supposed to have these gathering areas. It had fountains before, but it's got statues and extra wide plazas and walkways, and so they still want to be a part of the master development, but rely on them for the formal open space as they do for it now. Rely on them for parking because there's shared parking, and obviously, a shared parking agreement would be required. And to, we don't allow lighting to exceed half a foot, you know, beyond the property line, but these properties have a shared access drive, and so to also allow that. And so they all, all the exceptions they're proposing are to allow it to continue looking mostly the way it does now, with the exception of the two vacant parcels, or one vacant parcel, one vacant parcel that'll be developed, but will give a different income revenue, I think, for the Avenue's. The master developer, Big V, who owns it now, would still be responsible for maintaining that frontage along Medical Center Parkway. It's been an exceptional example of having that installed prior to the out parcel, so you don't have this piecemeal effect, not a sidewalk here, sidewalk in front of three lots, the landscaping, the irrigation, so they will continue to maintain what's along Medical Center Parkway, however, the rest of the property would be maintained by the individual property owners. We kind of mimicked a little bit of that in Clary Park. They, of course, their tenant mix is not quite the same as the Avenue, but they had Heinz, who was doing a lot of the work along the frontage road there to add that continuity and that design. The one item that we thought we wanted to have them look at now with the plan development is the fact that Mr. Griffith and his department are working on plans for adding additional lanes in each direction on Medical Center Parkway. With that, there's some work that may hit us in the heart, but it's part of growth, and they've gotta take out some of the things that were there, some of the plazas, some of the landscaping, some of the lighting, irrigation, and they're gonna try to put it back as best as possible. But there's some additional right-of-way that's needed at the plaza, and so the applicants have appeared willing to dedicate that very small, little area that's needed, and that's represented in the program book as well. So our ask today is for you to schedule a public hearing for September 6, the evening of September 6, to consider this zoning application. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Mr. Taylor, do you have a presentation? He does not have a presentation, but we have the book here if you wanted to see any of the additional pages that might help you.
I know you said this, but you are, even though they would sell these, or have the ability to sell these parcels, Big V is still responsible for the landscaping of each of these parcels? Did I hear you say that?
Only along Medical Center Parkway.
That's what I meant.
Yes, that 25 feet.
And to maintain that landscaping.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought when you came over here, I was like, oh no.
I just wanted to be clear that that's what I heard you say, because that is, that is very, that's great.
Matt Taylor of SCC. It's gonna stay the exact same way it is today, and so Big V takes care of everything along the frontage today. The individual users take care of what's on their site, what is theirs, so it's gonna continue to operate and look exactly the same. There's just gonna be a property line that really nobody outside of this room is really gonna know about, basically, so.
All right. Any other questions for either the applicant or Margaret Ann?
If there are none, I move to set the public hearing for September 6.
Second.
Ms. Jacob?
Councilwoman Naval Water?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Silas?
Aye.
Councilman Wright?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Staff reports or any other business at this point in time?
The only thing that I wanted to mention is that I did receive an email from TAPA, and they're working on putting together the agenda for the planning commissioner training, their annual online training, and so should be getting you some more information about that here very soon.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we're adjourned.